Commission and our board members prior to the meeting. For hybrid meetings, which is what this meeting would be tonight, we are allowing the public to join us if they wish. We did have live public comment from this spot on the podium if someone wants to comment. So our prior policy was that we did accept the real-time live public comment in person. The thing we're going to talk about when we go back through each section is what to do with remote meetings in the future. The third section that we're going to cover tonight was to authorize fully remote meetings. That's what we had with the City Commission held in immediate response to the pandemic and many of our boards, some of them are still holding. That's when everyone attends remotely and we use something like Zoom or a similar forum for the public to watch and for the board members or commissioners to interact. We did incorporate all the requirements of the Attorney General and the best practices into that policy. We did not have a prior policy on remote attendance. We really didn't have much remote attendance, only on very rare occasions. But we did follow KOMA, which is the Kansas Open Meetings Act, if in those rare circumstances in which someone needed to attend by phone conference or some other way. The fourth, Section 4 of the resolution authorized the city manager to change the format or cancel an in-person public meeting when necessary for the public health, safety, welfare. This is simply because we weren't sure if something might come up that day in the building or otherwise, and we wanted to be able to act quickly. We did not have a prior specific policy regarding cancellation of meetings, but the practice is that the city manager and the mayor together could change format or cancel the commission meeting. And the same would be true of a city board liaison and the board chair. And the last section that we'll go through, we'll go back through these one by one, get some feedback from the City Commission, is to temporarily change, we actually restricted the competitive process for certain purchases only if it was impractical or we couldn't find people to compete for it. And we temporarily increased the city manager's spending authority to 75,000 and department heads to 25,000. The purchasing authority was 20,000 for the city manager and department heads for 10. So I just went through the resolution, but I think it would be helpful and we'll just kind of go back through it. I've got some options here. And if it's okay with the mayor, it would be good just to get feedback through each section as we go. What we're looking for is how we can move forward, which things of these types of provisions you would like to keep in place either permanently or temporarily or just let expire. So the first one is the first reading of, excuse me, the one reading of an ordinance as opposed to two. So I'll turn it over to the City Commission.
We'll provide feedback on each of them. I think depending on the issue, if it's an emergency and related to COVID, I think one reading is fine because there's probably a sense of urgency. But if not, I prefer the...
I agree with that. I think that the whole purpose of the temporary resolution was to deal with COVID. And, you know, there may be something that becomes an emergency that's not COVID but is affected by it. But for the most part, I think our standard has been two readings. I'm comfortable with two. I believe our community expects that kind of openness. And so that's what I support. Those are our standards.
Commissioner Hattasal here. So what does that mean, ladies? Does that mean no one readings unless it's, you're saying you want two readings for everything, right?
Right.
So is there going to be any circumstance where one reading's okay?
If it's COVID-related and it's an emergency.
Okay. So is that...
That's what I just said.
Okay. So does that mean extend temporary provisions into 2021? Katie, in your mind?
No. What I'm hearing is, and what I, the way I would probably recast that is to say we'd have two readings except if it's, we had to adopt an ordinance related to a declared emergency as declared by the federal, local, or state government. That would apply, that way we'd have the same ability if there was another type of emergency that required quick action. And so that would be, I, we can make it a temporary provision, but I understood it to mean to be a permanent change.
Permanent change to, to accept an emergency? And who determines if it's an emergency?
Well, that's something we'd have to specify. It could be as determined by the city manager or the city manager in consultation with the mayor or, I mean, you can specify who, who that is. You have, we could make it specific where there would have to be a declared emergency for it even to apply. Then, so the determination would simply be whether that ordinance relates to that declared emergency or is necessary for it. So we can, we can put that on whoever the commission would like. Or we can leave it vague and what we would do is we would evaluate at the time and probably the legal department would give a legal opinion to Ron that he would share with the commission.
And they're in an emergency, declared emergency right through December 31st.
Correct.
So, yeah.
But you're looking at a permanent policy is what you're saying.
We can do it permanent or temporary. That's what I understood that your, your goal was to have that flexibility in an emergency if it arises in the future. And it would obviously apply now.
Right. As it applies to COVID, but you never know if there's going to be a tornado or anything else that comes. You can't declare an emergency if there's a tornado hitting. There's going to be decisions made probably. But as it relates to this, because it was because of COVID that we were doing this, that's what I, my intention is as it relates to COVID because that's why we adopted this resolution to begin with.
Sure. And in that case, we'd probably just revise the temporary order resolution and flip it. So it would be the default is two, except in COVID-related instead of the opposite, which is the default is one unless someone makes that request for two.
Right.
Okay. So my question was, is that one of the three options you've presented?
These are, you can, that option is perfect.
No, but that's not really one of those three. So this is a new, a new one that you hadn't proposed, but you're, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, okay, it's not one of the three that you threw out there really.
I would say it's the first one and we're saying we're going to extend this temporary provision, but we're going to amend it and keep it temporary.
Keep it temporary.
If I understand the mayor correctly.
Yes. That, that's my statement.
I'm fine with that too. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were, okay, we're on the same page.
So the city manager, Ron Fear, and wouldn't the commission, when they were considering first reading of order, ordinance, decide at that meeting that I'm, that they could agree to one reading?
We can put that in the temporary resolution, yes, if that's how you'd like that to occur. But what I'm hearing is that from the City Commission is that they only want that one reading if it's related to COVID-19.
If it's an emergency.
And they wouldn't have that same ability if it's, they all want one reading, but it's not related to COVID-19.
Right. But I guess even if their policy was that, you know, I guess I could see potential situations where it was some other kind of emergency and they would agree at the time they read first reading that they want to approve it on one reading.
We would have to write a different type of resolution to accomplish that, but that is an option the commission could consider.
Well, we're coming back to why we had this in the first place, which was because of COVID.
Right.
And so before COVID, we did everything with two readings, even an emergency, I believe. So with this, because it is related to COVID, and I don't know what's going to happen in the next few months, I'd rather have two readings except if it's related to COVID and it's an emergency, which is one reading.
Well, Hattasal here again. Yeah, the, sort of the corollary to that is if, if it's something that's so basic and undisagreeable, it would be nice to go ahead and pass it in one and let people get on with their lives who are requesting it or who it would affect. Because the quickest we could ever generally do two is two weeks apart because of the legislative thing.
Unless we have a special meeting.
Unless you have a special meeting, it's hard to justify a special meeting just for a, or something, I suspect. But, yeah, I don't know. I guess, I guess I kind of like, really, as I think about it, it's more the idea of making it one unless you request two, simply to, if it's not anybody that's really has any concern about it. And I, so sometimes the problem is people don't get concerned about it till after the first reading.
No issues.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine. Do the, do the two unless it's an emergency and whatever we determine to be an emergency, it may not just be COVID. It may be, like you say, a tornado or a windstorm or ice storm or some other crazy thing. So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with what they're suggesting.
I think sometimes when we do a first reading for other things, like Mark was thinking, the way I'm thinking is most people don't even know what we have on our agenda until they see it. And then we have it on our consent for a second reading. So I, that's, that's why I'm proposing that.
Lynda Morris. And sometimes we ask for some changes by the second reading too, so.
I have a quote, just to clarify. So if we were to go back to pre-pandemic, two readings, there wasn't an opportunity to go to one reading? And I thought there was, not even if there was three or four commissioners suggesting we go to one or anything like that, right?
I should have been introducing myself, but it's City Attorney Katie Jackson. No, we would, we would have a really hard time doing that. Technically, the commission, because we don't have an adopted policy, could make them, someone could make a motion to do one reading and the majority can vote for that. But the problem, if that's contrary to our practice that we don't, we rarely fear from, it then the validity of the ordinance could be challenged as a result of that. So my advice would have been that if you want to do that, we need to establish and let the public know that that's an option and when it may occur. And then we would have the ability to do that.
Care about it.
I don't know if there's any more feedback, but I think I have an idea.
I think the one, the only other reason to go to one reading, and I don't think anybody's mentioned it, it cuts down on the paperwork and the work for the staff. And that's the one that I thought was the most valid. I think this emergency thing is nonsense myself. You know, putting it in there just complicates it. You'll have arguments about what's an emergency. So I'd rather just see us adopt a, a new permanent policy that says, fine, we can do it on one reading unless a commissioner, you know, objects for some reason. Because a lot of these things are routine and there's no sense having the staff spend all this time producing pieces of paper that wind up in the trash can. And, and to me, that's a big thing. It, it, it's a budget issue actually. And so I'd like to see it crafted that way. And I think this COVID thing was, was just unique because you had federal money and decisions had to be made quick. But, but I don't see that coming up again, so I just assume not complicate it with that. Otherwise, we'll have 15 legal people here every night trying to decide what's an emergency.
I, I still think it's good to have two readings, not necessarily because of staff work as much as the public often doesn't know until we have a discussion about certain agenda items. And what I've come to realize is what we think is important is not necessarily what the community might think is important until they hear it again. So that's my take on this.
And these are under the current emergency declaration we have, right? But we're talking, we're not talking, I mean, this is being clouded by the, the request that we consider a permanent policy change, when in reality, the reason we originally adopted it was because of the emergency declaration in order to allow the city to be more nimble during COVID when we anticipated not, people being gone and working from home. And so I am not going to be, I don't, I'm not interested in being pushed for a permanent solution here. To me, this continues to be a, a temporary solution having to do with the COVID emergency that the state and the federal and, and our city is, a county and city are under right now. And the fact that they probably will be extended because this isn't going to be over December 31st. So that's my thinking.
Was that helpful?
Yeah. So this is City Attorney Jackson. I think I've heard support for expanding a temporary resolution.
Yeah, temporary expansion.
At some point, all these resolutions are going to expire and this question's going to come back to you. Do you want to go back to two readings? So it's something that you can continue to think about.
We just keep dealing with, Lynda Morris, we just, I, it seems like this has been on our agenda about every month. And our intention was to scoot it off till the end of December, to keep it from coming back every month. And then in later in December, we will be thinking about extending it further. So I, I'm not interested in spinning our wheels all the time. I want to push it out there far enough that we can depend on, we know what the policy's going to be and let it be more fixed, even though it's not permanent. This is devil talk, I'm sorry.
I think there is going to be another declaration of emergency from what Governor Kelly was speaking this afternoon. So that's one of the reasons why I think this is still in a temporary phase before we start discussing when do we phase out of it and create a permanent policy.
Thank you. This is City Attorney Jackson. I think we have the feedback. We have some ideas to return to you on section, this was section two, three, and four. I'm combining those. I briefly explained the differences, but this relates to remote meetings and attendance and cancellation of meetings. So again, our option is you can just extend the temporary resolution. You can amend it and extend it to some date in the future. Or we have talked about, and I would recommend, that we do adopt a permanent policy for remote attendance independent of any type of emergency because we do have city commissioners or board members who occasionally are out of town or have another issue and they'd still like to participate in the meeting. And we'd like to ensure that they're able to do that and also that KOMA, which is the Kansas Open Meetings Act, is met during that time. So this would be a positive change for our board members and for the City Commission. We don't have to adopt it as a permanent policy now. Again, we could, we could make it coincide with another temporary resolution, but at some point, we'd like to recommend some type of permanent permission for individual board members to attend, or, excuse me, to attend remotely.
Yeah. This is Yusharetti. I think that would be very appropriate. I think it's worked well and I think it just goes with the times that we're in now. And it's more flexible for commissioners that may not be able to be present as well as staff. I would be just concerned about if we go remote again, about public comment, but that's to come up a little bit later. But I'm okay with the change that you're proposing with this one.
And so if I could confirm, Mayor, you're talking about, we could make this a permanent resolution to allow this, to amount, allow remote attendance. And then I, on this slide is actually an opportunity for us to talk about that real-time live public comment. So when we talk about meetings, there's two types of meetings we're talking about. We're talking about a full remote meeting where everybody is tuning in from wherever they are. And then a meeting like this where someone could come and participate in person, they're called the hybrid meetings. We can distinguish between those two in terms of in-person comments, which is what we do now. We allow live in-person comments on our, our hybrid meetings. Just we aren't, we haven't had the protections and the, the technology in place to really implement real-time live public comment at our fully remote meetings. So, and again, we can, we can just renew our resolution if, as Commissioner Moore said, we could put it off farther, June 1st or something, so that maybe we, we wouldn't have to revisit it. Or if you're ready for some kind of permanent solution, we could provide that as well.
Lynda Morris, I am, I would support a permanent policy on remote meeting. And I would have done that a year or two ago even because we occasionally, not often, but with COVID, we're in another, and I believe in the future. And now that we have paved the way and the staff is able to support remote meetings and we have a reliable technology and we've set this room up and with the new technology, I, I think that's just what we, and I support in-person, remote, and hybrid so that one commissioner can be gone and be a part of the meeting. So that is the maximum flexibility. And I'm thrilled that it doesn't cost additional money because we're already investing in it. And COVID CARES money, I think, is paying for some of it. So that's a benefit of the spending the CARES money to allow us to be more flexible.
Other feedback? Okay. It's a go.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we, we've had, we had this policy, the school districts had this policy for quite some time. I mean, I was able to beam in to meetings when I was on vacations and I think it would make sense to do this.
Absolutely.
Sounds good?
Okay.
Thank you.
And the last section, I think we've, we've actually addressed this to a certain degree. We did temporarily increase the city manager's spending authority to 75,000. We also suspended competitive processes only when it was impractical to pursue. Otherwise, we did follow those normal processes. Our recommend, I'm going to just skip straight to the recommendation is to allow that to expire on December 31st because we, the City Commission has adopted a charter ordinance to increase the, the public improvements that have to come before the City Commission to 50,000. And the City Commission has been briefed that we will be updating the purchasing policy and purchasing policy resolutions to coincide with that. So our suggestion is just to allow the reversion to the $50,000 that will go into effect after January 1st of 2021. We wanted to confirm with you that that was acceptable. I will note that our purchasing policy now, and we'll, we'll refine it a little more to address these unusual circumstances, but does allow the city manager to make some limited emergency expenditures that do exceed his spending authority. It wouldn't have helped us with the extent of expenses, expenditures we needed in this case because of the Sparks money and all those things. So we'll, but there still is some emergency authority in that purchasing policy that'll come to you in the future. So this might be the, the easy one to get feedback on, but we just want to see if anyone has any other thoughts or if that plan is okay to proceed with.
This is Yusharetti. I can, I can support this recommendation, although what you just said was kind of vague to me about has spending authority still in emergency cases. Does that mean you can still spend up to $75,000 in emergency cases? I don't, I didn't understand that piece of it.
The purchasing policy for decades has allowed the city manager to spend over his spending limit, whatever that is, for expenses directly tied to emergency response. So, and if there's no limit, but he has accountability back to the commission for those expenses, has to report them back, provide that information to you. But we're typically it's, and maybe Ron can, or city manager can give some examples of when he's used that.
City Manager Ron Fear, and typically these happen with broader-based emergency, whether we've had extensive storm damage with damage to public facilities or a large sinkhole that we have to get emergency equipment in to stop the bleeding, if you will, whether it's a leak or a situation, large cranes that adds, you know, contractors to be able to respond immediately. And so those are the types of things that we're talking about where we've had damages and we don't have time to have a meeting to be able to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I support this recommendation. This is Yusharetti. So I think that's reasonable to change that. Other commissioners?
All right. Well, question five.
Oh, yes.
Lynda Morris. With regard to section five, the competitive practices, I want to ask about what, how you would be modifying those, I guess, not just the seventy, the money amount, but do you accept fewer bids? Do you, how, what else do you do to change the competitive practices?
City Attorney Jackson, this was adopted in the resolution that's in effect through the end of the year.
Yeah.
And it really just, we have a purchasing policy that specifies the competition, the competitive process we need to follow. It just said that we do not have to follow if it was impractical. And the examples that were given were, for example, sometimes we have to get three quotes. Well, if two of the, you know, there's only five shops and four of them are closed, we might only be able to get one quote if we need something quickly. It's really just that kind of stuff. And it, it had to be impractical. In other words, we were, we were by default following our competitive processes only when we found that we couldn't get the responses back, would we have considered suspending that?
I, I, this is still under the temporary resolution and I supported $75,000 for COVID in that temporary measure. On a normal basis, I would support 50,000 from the old 20 to 50. And I, I would note that we haven't received many explanations anytime that it's been used. It's been like, I don't know, six weeks since we saw one maybe. So just be interested in continuing to receive those.
So they're going to change it to 50? And you want to see them?
I, that's my, my position.
Yeah, that's the recommendation, so.
Yeah. And we've been providing copies of those approved specific invoice and requests in your mail folder. I think we just had one last week, so.
Okay.
Those are, and I would say we probably are averaging once a week where you've gotten at least one copy of an invoice that met that criteria between the 20 and the 75 now.
I know sometimes Brenda or somebody writes us a little memo with one or two items in it that, as an explanation. But you're talking about invoices then? Okay. Okay.
Any other comments on this one? Okay. Sounds like your recommendation's accepted there.
Thank you. This is Attorney Jackson, and I'm going to shift topics completely now. Thank you for the feedback so we can return with these things. Just, this is just for your information, this is what we already have scheduled related to COVID-19. On December 1st will be the face mask ordinance. That also is scheduled to expire on December 31st of 2020. So this gives us an opportunity to revisit that ordinance before the expiration. And then on the 1st slash 15th, you'll see some resolutions based upon the guidance So I'm going to completely shift topic, topics to something not related to COVID. This is our board appointment policy. And this is a kind of an unusual circumstance that only arose this year. So in 2015, you all know the history that we used to have elections in April, they were shifted to November with terms beginning on the first Monday. So our city mayoral terms previously ran April to April because that was when we installed our new commissioners. In 2019, the legislature authorized cities to shift the start of their terms of their commissioners and their mayors if they chose to their, their first business meeting. For us, that's the first working Tuesday of January. So I, I just put this here for reference. This is the actions that this city commission has taken responding to what this, what the legislature did. What one of the things we had to do in the near term was we had to adjust all of our mayoral terms because of our practice of the mayor being, assuming the term based upon the votes and that they get in the election. So that has resolved. We have gone through those adjusted terms. And the first mayoral term that started in January, it is now on the schedule of the legis, that the legislature recommends was Mayor Reddy's term when she became mayor in January of 2020. So this is our first year that this issue that we're going to talk about tonight has arisen. So again, the mayoral terms run that first Tuesday of January to the next first Tuesday. So what issue does that create? Well, for the first time, we have all the, many of our board appointments, including the law board, run the calendar year, which means they expire December 31st. So in the past, this has not arisen because our mayors either took the term in April, so they took it mid-year, or we've had this process where we were shifting to the new thing and they, none of them took office as mayor until January, until this year. So what we're looking for is guidance from this commission on what we want our mayors to do from this point forward. Do we want the outgoing mayor to appoint some or all, some or all the positions that are going to expire that same year, December 31st? Or our incoming mayor who's going to be installed January 7th to make those appointments for that same calendar year? We, this year, and just as a recap, Mayor Reddy did appoint a law board member, but this was an unusual circumstance in that former Commissioner Dodson was in a spot that he had to give up when he went off the commission. And we had to make a switch because we had a citizen who was in a commissioner's spot. So we made, it was really more of an administrative change. So what we're looking for from the commission tonight is whether, what guidance you'd like to give to city administration related to when the ma, which mayor should make the appointments? And then whether or not you'd like to put that in some type of policy resolution or somewhere so that that's known to the administration and the commission in the future. So if you have any questions about that, I can, I can explain. But it's, again, this is a novel issue for the city of Manhattan.
Yeah. I was looking at, this is Yusharetti. I was looking at the county commissioners and when they do their appointments. And they usually do them in December, right? Because the term ends in December 31st. And typically for the mayor that's there, that's when they appoint the mayors. I think for the past several years, it's always been in the even months, even years that it's been done. And the previous mayor, the same mayor that was there for the city commission and whoever the county did it at the same time, maybe weeks apart in December. So that's the way I'm seeing this as far as the appointments run. So just, just for other people's input.
I do have, I support the idea of regularizing the policy. I think that's important so that we don't bump our noses. You know, I think it's important. So the statute says, like the law board, will elect officers in January. And it's going to be tough to have somebody make an, the mayor make an appointment on January 6th and have, anyway, it's just going to be under the gun every January in some way or another. So I support it being regularized so that to give the staff and the commissions time to function and do, do it the way they do it, whether it's two readings or one. And I did have a question though about the... about the other boards that are, the city has. I know that some boards expire in May and some in September. I don't know how. I think that's just an accumulation of history. Would those boards change? I know you've been working with them recently to install some bylaws and make sure that they're functioning in a uniform and consistent manner also. But I'm wondering how, what you would, what your plan is for the future. Will they all line up so that in a similar way, or continue their staggered expiration dates? If they're, when they're staggered, it allows the appointing authority, the mayor, to find people on a kind of a graduated way, rather than all one day, having to make all those appointments? So that's just my first thought, was how to handle that.
This is City Attorney Jackson. Just to respond, you're correct, Commissioner, that the terms of the boards are individually determined by their bylaws, ordinance, or resolution that forms the board. So there's some variation in those. If the commission directed the city to make those terms consistent on a calendar year, we can make those changes to the boards, or as you said, there may be an advantage to rolling terms. But at this point, no, there is not a concerted effort to be consistent. In the past, there hasn't been. So they're just as they've been designed historically.
Yeah, I would agree. City Manager Ron Fear, that I, I think a lot of the history of those board terms have been set up to do, just as you said, to give the mayor more time and flexibility to spread those appointments out over the course of the year, instead of all being faced with them at one time, which would be pretty daunting, if all of the terms expired at the end of the calendar year. So by having them segmented out, and most of them are, there's a bunch in March, there's a ending in March, a bunch ending in April, several in June, and a few in August, a couple in October, and then quite a few at the end of December. So it does make the job of finding replacements and encouraging replacements, kind of an ongoing process, and not a big laundry list that you have to do, and try to hurry to make those appointments.
I was just going to make the observation that everyone on our commission but me have been mayor at some point, and so I'll defer to your expertise. I don't know what kind of problems that that would really create over the new, just allowing the appointment, matching the appointment up with the calendar year. I don't know, I don't, I don't know that that would, so.
We don't have it quantified, I guess.
Yeah.
The other piece, one, no, Yusha Reddy, I don't even know if we've ever, some, on some of the boards, when I point folks to them, they have terms. This is the second time they can serve, they're done with their term. But I don't, there are several boards that don't have that. And then there's the Douglas Center Advisory Board, which has a regional, a geographic area. And I think their board discussed to remove that, so I don't even know what happened with that portion of it. So each of them have different bylaws, different rules, and different parameters that they discuss. So at some point, I think maybe we should look at it in a comprehensive manner, or I don't know if they just do that on their own. It's confusing to me when I have to look at each one when they're appointed, to knowing if they're in that geographic area, or if they're done with their term, or all of these things. But I think it's good to have something in a written format for future commissioners to follow. Commissioner Haddasol.
Commissioner Haddasol, I agree. We got to keep them staggered, otherwise it's just too overwhelming to try to do them all at once. And I would be in favor of whoever's still mayor on December 31st, do their best to try to fill the terms that expire December 31st, and then if anything is not fulfilled, then the mayor who takes over on January 2nd through the 6th can pick up the pace and finish appointing anything that's left over, quote unquote. But, so I, yeah, I think if, since a mayor doesn't finish until January, the first meeting in January, they should go ahead and have the ability to kind of, to point the ones that expired December 31st, unless, yeah, unless they don't feel strongly about it, or they can't find anybody, or they don't feel good about anybody on the list, then they could, for whatever reason, just not, not leave one empty, and then that'll be the next mayor's problem to fill it.
That makes the most sense to me. And just to, for people that might be curious of this process, we all, the entire commission ends up supporting, voting on that appointment. So it's just not an appointment by one person, but it ends up being an entire vote. So if there is turnover, or there is some controversy, it still has to come, has to be a majority vote for that person to be appointed. So I didn't know if there was any problem with the timing, but I agree with Commissioner Haddasol. I think that it's probably more of just a workload issue for that incoming mayor.
And Yusha Reddy, I think one of the things is, this commission has to approve all of the recommendations for board appointments. So regardless of which board it is, that's on our legislative agendas for all board appointments that we place on them. So that's, there's always discussion. And as we're speaking about boards, feel free to go fill out an interest form for any of the boards you're interested in as well, because that's the pool we look into when we start appointing folks. Thank you. Do you have enough information, Katie?
I think so. This is Attorney Jackson. I just want to confirm for administration, Mayor Reddy will be making appointments that would expire December 31st. Even if the policy isn't done yet, you will be able to do those, and we'll prepare it that way through the end of the year. We'll get the policy done before the end of the year, but you might have some that you do prior to the policy.
And that's the way it was done even before there was the policy, anyway, I believe?
Well, it didn't really override.
We didn't have a policy. Okay, it was just tradition?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And that concludes my presentation tonight.
Thank you. This is Yusha Reddy. I don't think we have anything else on the agenda, do we? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you for being patient during this meeting and the technology glitches we had. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. There is a Veterans Day parade, and there's a breakfast at the American Legion, as well, it will be livestreamed, I believe, on Facebook, as well as on our Channel 3 station here. Thank you.